All right, call to order, Town of North Bramford, Town Council Meeting, North Bramford, Connecticut, Tuesday, August 16, 2022, in the Town Council Chambers. We'll start with the students' flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, folks, thanks for everyone joining us today.
Appreciate it.
All right, welcome back.
Thank you so very much.
So good to see you. If you wouldn't mind, Paul and Walpole, please.
Mayor McMillan.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Zampano.
Here.
Counselor Abelson.
Here.
Counselor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Downs.
Yeah.
Counselor Goode.
Here.
Counselor Mace.
Here.
And Counselor Plicia.
Okay, thank you. Item two, minutes of the previous meeting, of seven minutes of August 2, 2022, WPCA and Town Council Meeting, please.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained.
Mr. Mayor, before we continue, I would like to make some motions to amend the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so first motion is, can I group these together? Okay. So, the first one is to add item 6A, resignation of Mike Michael Downs from the Town Council, 6B, appointment of Town Manager, 6C, appointment of Gene Stabile to Park and Recreation, and then items 8I, under new business, 8I, it's award of bid number 12 for NBHS Phase III Technology Package, item 8J, award the NBHS Digital Signage Package, 8K, the award of the NBHS Wireless Access Points Contract, and 8L, discussion and action regarding compensation for acting Town Manager.
All right, we have a motion by Counselor Angeloni, group additional items to our agenda, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would also like to amend the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
6D, appointment of Van Auger as the hearing officer for the ATV ordinance.
Did you say Dan?
Dan, uh, Van, V-A-N.
V-A-N Morrison.
Auger.
Auger.
For ATV.
Ordinance, that hearing officer.
For the ATV ordinance.
I'll second that.
If they could rebound hand running later on, that'd be great. All right, we have a motion by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Okay, thank you. Okay, on to the regular Town Council Meeting. We're gonna go into item three, Town Manager Report, Update on COVID-19 Testing and Vaccine. Our Acting Manager.
Yes, you have the report from East Shore District Health in your folders. Basically, we have gone up slightly. Again, the positivity positivity rate has increased to 4.8%, and that's for the week ending August 10th. So just a slight increase. The state positivity rate is at 12.07 as of August 11th, but we're hoping to trend in the lower quadrant now. So we're hoping to see it decrease. No concerns for East Shore about that slight increase, just so you know. And then to go on, I do have, before the Permanent Project Building Committee gives their reports on the project updates, I have a few more informational points I'd like to make, because we're hiring a lot of town positions, I just wanted to give you an update on that.
Please.
The tax collector, it is with our HR person, the Operations, Inc., and they posted again on August 5th, because we had a problem with the other person backing out. It has also been locally advertised on the town website, The Sound, and Totucket Times. As of right now, we do not have any viable candidates. The Public Works Department, you, last, at the last meeting, we appointed Dan Celentano as the Assistant Public Works Director, which created a vacancy in the union position of Highway 2. So we had a, we posted that internally for the union, which is required for a five-day period, and we have had an applicant apply for that, and Fran awarded that last week. So now we have a Highway 1 vacancy, which has just been posted internally for the union, starting Monday, yesterday, until Friday. And then, and we have had one applicant for that so far, but the deadline is Friday. The Clerk of the Works position was advertised on the town website, in The Sound and Totucket Times, for the projects. So far, we have not received any applications. And then we have, again, as of August 5th, we have a vacancy in the Town Planning position, the Town Planner and/CEO. I can talk about that a little bit later, but we have that. I just wanted you to know it was advertised, it was Operations, Inc., our HR person did post it. We have also posted it on the town website, in Totucket Times and in The Sound. So when the HR person gets involved, they post it on Indeed, so it goes nationwide.
Okay.
Okay. And then, just one little thing, the Little Red Schoolhouse, EDC's been working with Totucket Time, Totucket Historical Society to get a grant to restore it. The Historical Society has a lease with the town, it's a 20-year lease, so in order for them to apply for the grant, they'll need permission from the town. So when, as we get closer to that period, I, I do have a draft letter from Roger Salway, but I would like the Town Attorney to review that before any signatures happen. And the UI has proposed a rate increase, just so you know, they've invited all the towns to participate. Our new purchasing agent will be participating in a Zoom meeting, and we're looking for information on exactly what the rate increase is, and the potential effective date. So I'll have more information for that. His first Zoom meeting is August 23rd. One bit of good news, we'll be receiving an absentee ballot grant based on our absentee ballots that were received, not issued, but received in 2020 and 2018. They kind of did an average of it for all the towns, and I just got word from my Connecticut Town Clerks Association. And North Bramford, we will be receiving $4,442. So more information to come when we'll receive the funds, as I get it. That's it for the report. I believe Permanent Project is here for the update.
So we got two parts to this. Dave's gonna be taking one part with the school, and I'll do the other part for the police station, which comes up later, but unfortunately, me and Dave both have engagements after, and we both gotta be out of here as quick as possible.
You can do them all at once.
Do mine?
Yeah.
So, we were talking about the bond resolutions, which everybody knows is down the list later on. Is there any questions at all to it? So the bond is in Section 1 for the sum of $16,200,000, is appropriated for planning of the designing of construction, which Anthony secured, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there any questions on that? And I did speak to most of yous, if not all of yous. Out of that money, we will only be using $10.5 million. I wanna make that clear. We will not be coming back to this board for anything but the 10.5, but we unfortunately have to bond 16.2, because that's just how the law is. But if we did what we think we did correctly, there will be some money left over for, to be put back.
Right.
Should be a substantial amount, but we don't want to, two-door horns right now, but we did our homework. The second half, Rusty had some questions and some stuff about the junior high school, and Dave will take it from here.
So, what I just got this afternoon was from Rusty. We had our Permanent Projects Meetings, obviously, last night. At the end of our meeting, I asked Rusty to give us, for you guys tonight, the, basically, the rest of the proposals, what you have in your hand. For the roof, cable roof, finishing the structural steel, all the, you know, repairs to the building, and you have, you have everything, just what I got this afternoon at 5:00 from him. I will tell you, at your next meeting, Rusty would like to come to, obviously, go over this, if you guys have questions, or have any, you know, and I'm sure we will, because we have some questions on it. We, we just got this, so.
So the building committee has not discussed this yet?
No.
I got this last week.
Yep.
And I definitely had a long discussion.
Yeah, I just got off the phone with Rusty.
And he gave it to him, because I was out on COVID at the time, and I didn't want to bring a hair. We didn't vet it out, but we thought you guys definitely needed to see it before we vetted it.
I wanted to give you something tonight to put your teeth into until the next meeting. Right now is that, the cable roof is in this, we're gonna do it as an alternate, but he's asking now to probably add another half a million, so we'll probably be at 7.5 million is his number. He's at right about now 7, if you look at this number. So, once we have our meeting Monday, I guess you guys will meet, will you meet on the 30th?
No, we don't meet until after Labor Day.
Okay, so.
So you got a couple meetings.
Yeah, so we'll have a couple of long.
Let us dig into it.
Yeah.
And then on the high school, Al and I met with Jeff DiNofrio last night, we had a meeting with him. We have some concerns that we needed to discuss with him, while Victor, Lou, and Tom did the walkthrough. My biggest concern was, right off the rip, we did binder on last week, finishing this week. They wanted to do top coat. You know, this is, a lot of this is what I do. I pushed last night not to do top coat. We got talked into doing top coat by Gil Bane and a few others. This morning, Al and I talked, Victor and I talked, Tom and I talked, Lou and I talked, all day, back and forth. And I put it on hold with the blessing from the Permanent Projects Committee. We're gonna have a special meeting tomorrow. I do not believe we should put top coat down until this project is completed. Binder is more than sufficient for this project. When this school and project is done, if we do top coat now, it's gonna look terrible.
They still gotta put cranes on it.
And the fact that it's gonna settle. There's got, we have some subsoil issues over there, and subgrade issues that I feel, I wanna do binder, and the rest of the group agreed, so we're gonna have a special meeting tomorrow. And that was the biggest thing.
4:30.
4:30, yeah.
Where?
Zoom. Zoom, yeah.
By Zoom?
Yep.
I'm not aware of it, I'm not a clerk for that, maybe that.
Tom, did Tom talk to you, Lisa?
Michael?
Yeah, Mike, gotcha.
Did he? Did he send it to you?
Hmm.
All right, I'll send it to you.
Yeah, if you can.
It went kind of quick today.
I just wanted to make sure I have the information so that I can report back.
There is some stuff that came up through the walkthrough. They are digging up some of the.
So, there's a special meeting tomorrow, because I just sent in the meeting minutes from last night, which indicated that the entire area was going to be.
Not anymore.
Not anymore.
Can't do it. We're gonna have a problem, and we will be sorry if we do top coat.
Their answer to the thing was, you know what, we'll just blame the buses. And we found that out today, and we shut it down.
You know, I just, I paid.
That was the answer we got today.
So, 4:30 Zoom meeting.
The Zoom.
I think it's 4:15. I think it's at 4:15.
Oh, 4:15, yeah.
4:15.
So just to give you a quick update.
Dave, why are they so adamant about putting a top coat on now? Why?
Because the contractor's there, he doesn't wanna move his equipment back in, which we're gonna deal with that at a later date. And second of all, I can guarantee, I can't guarantee anything except death and taxes, that oil and asphalt, and liquid asphalt will be cheaper in a year or two from now, number one. Number two is, they got all, they don't wanna remobilize, and which the contractor doesn't, he's not gonna charge us to remobilize. There will be a cost to us to clean the parking lot, re, because we're gonna have to stripe the binder, and we're gonna, we're gonna have to pull all the, all the edges off the catch basins and.
The drains.
The drains, because we're gonna slope them, so no tripping, no hazards there.
It's minimal cost.
So, but.
So we're gonna do it again?
They gotta, they gotta come in with the.
It's cheaper than doing a top coat.
They gotta come in with the 250-foot stick, they gotta set all the units on the roof, they're behind on that. They gotta come in with six aerial lists, they're behind on the glass glaciers. They had storefronts, we wanted regular, it was a mistake on Rusty's, Rusty's design.
That was what Al and I.
So this is last minute, so they went, we split up. So we went to the site utilities, there was some stuff that brought up, they're digging up all, most of the site utilities, refix them. There's some.
And no inspections by the RWA?
Insufficient, and I don't wanna.
Big problem, yeah.
There's stuff we had to fix, so they said, well, let's walk around and make a list. So I said, if you want me to do it, put a hard hat on. By the time we got done, they had six pages. They gotta fix it. We had the building official there. It's gonna get put in properly, it ain't, they're not putting anything in. It's gonna go above and beyond, and it's gonna go right to specs. So they got a six, seven-page list, and they're gonna go to work and start fixing things. And we're gonna be on-site.
Thank you for doing this.
And the other thing is, we would like.
Yeah, we're on-site.
To have the attorney.
Once every 10 days, or if not more?
At least twice a month, we need them. It's getting to a point where we have to build our files.
Right, so, yeah, so.
Right now, we're at $7,740,000, and out of that, $5,400,000 of it is due to the design.
So with, Al and I, when we met with Jeff last night from some of our concerns, you know, we got a bit of an education, and we're gonna kind of retrace some of our steps with paperwork. So we have a trail for the last several months, which we do, we just have to put it together. But we would like the blessing from you guys, if we could have Jeff DiNofrio, at least for the time being, on the first and third meeting of the month. You know, we learned that Jeff DiNofrio spent every meeting at the Permanent Projects for North Haven High School. He was there every meeting. I said, you know, Al and I kinda talked about, I said, I don't, I don't, I don't think we need him every meeting, but I wouldn't mind seeing him twice a month at our meeting, which will help curb any of the nonsense that happens with Gil Banes and the Rustys of the world, or, you know, not knowing, you know, the letter of the law that we're not familiar with, which Jeff is, you know, phenomenal at. So we wanted to, that was the other thing, really wanted to run by you guys, you know, can we have the blessing of this group to have him come? And we may, we may find in time that we don't need him anymore, or we may need him at will.
Just to give you.
But we already made the motion that you have him.
You could use him, but I wanted, I said to Al, and Al, I agree that.
So we don't have to make another motion.
In 2000.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was, you know.
There's no set dollar amount, so.
Okay, all right.
Just to give you an idea.
Be judicious with your using them.
Pardon?
Be judicious with your using that resource.
Right.
He just wrote off the North Haven High School. It's still not closed up from 2006.
Right, right.
This town can't afford that.
And the state's cracking down on issues of not payments and overpayments, and issues that are happening with architects and engineers, and all of these things that are being.
Dave and Al got a really good game plan, so. We just gotta trust them, because there's only two people that could be in the room with the attorney at a time, and it's gonna work. And it's gonna work to our favor, and it has to be done properly, ethically, and.
I wish we, kind of, I, and I kind of asked Jeff about the PD issues and contracts, which he's well ahead of right now, so, which is a big plus. And I wish that we all got Jeff the first day on the ground at the high school. But, you know, it is what it is. We will, we will use him to the benefit of this community and the taxpayers.
Like the PD, he went through it and extended everything to our benefit.
Yeah.
He wrote it, Ironclad got everything we needed, and nobody argued it.
Yeah.
He's really good at his job. We just gotta let Al and Dave, and, so what happens is, we can't have this discussion as a board group, and now they get to the point where some of Gil Bane's people say, it doesn't make a difference to us if we're standing there. So, two people could only talk to the attorney at one time, because it's that critical. So Al and Dave are gonna go that way while we're doing site visits. So, we got a game plan, and it's a good one.
Yeah, so it's, we're gonna, Jeff was supposed to give us a template for us to move forward with Mike today. Mike said he'll be calling us. I didn't hear from him today, so I imagine tomorrow or the next day, we'll have a template for, for us to move forward.
We mean Mike the purchasing.
Yeah, Mike the purchasing.
The purchasing.
And, and it's going to, it's going to share some of the responsibilities as to these change orders. Who are they at? You know, where do they fall? And Jeff said to us point-blankly, build the school and let me do my job at the end, so.
Can I ask a question?
It's, I'm just, we're, we got a game plan.
For site walks, when I was, I do IWA site walks, and I've been asked to take minutes for that. For this, I've been asked to not attend, and I just don't know if it would be.
Not to attend, I'm sorry.
The site walks.
She needs to.
It's not, we're not discussing anything.
It's not a meeting.
It's not a meeting.
IWA is a meeting when they do site walks.
We got hard hats, we're walking around.
If it would be helpful to have a record of your site visits.
We're not communicating between each other, we're actually sending notes, they're taking our notes.
Welcome to UCX Meet Me Conference, Amy. Please.
I mean, we can, we can, we can address it at next Monday's meeting, but I, you know, we're, you know what happens is, quite frankly, is two of us are that way, two of us are that way, one of us is this way, one of, so, sometimes there's two of us, sometimes there's five of us, you know, on different ends of the project.
Observations on record, I guess, because it doesn't matter to me necessarily one way or another, I'm just thinking for.
But you talk about it at the meeting, don't you?
Yeah, we talk, everything we do there, we talk about it in the meetings.
Submit the notes, we can use those as an appendix.
Meeting minutes.
So as an attorney, even.
Just, just to put that out there.
Yeah, why don't we do that? We can make that as a good practice, we can, whatever notes you have, as long as it's not, you guys are doing a lot.
I think they come back and they talk about it.
But if you have the notes, you have me printing them off, just put her on as, as one of the contacts, and then she'll put them on as an appendix. We think you were gonna do it anyway, I've seen you do.
Yeah, right, I mean, we bring it all back to our meeting, and she probably hears it anyways, but we could certainly, you know, we'll, we'll let us talk.
Guys are doing a lot already.
It gets a little hot when you're in the building.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's.
Especially when you see stuff that taxpayers are paying for, and it's not what's supposed to be there.
I just have a quick question before you, because I know you're on time schedule here. So is the new purchasing assistant up to speed on your project?
And some, excellent.
Okay, good.
Excellent, excellent. Matter of fact, he was in our meeting with Jeff and I last night. We had a long talk with him as well, so, really good.
Okay.
That's great.
Much appreciated on that.
It's, it's, it's night and day, unbelievable. We're getting, it's instant responses.
Couldn't have a good team together.
And I didn't mean to cut Dave short while he was talking, but excuse me for that. There's stuff that the attorney and Ben, you would understand as an attorney, their handle, attorney-client privilege.
Yeah, that's fine.
Him and Al.
And then other than that, on the high school, really, it was, it was just about the paving. You know, we made some, we talked to Franny about some issues and, what's that?
Furniture.
Oh, yes, that was, that's a big thing. So, we do have to talk to, and Michael was gonna talk to Jeff DiNofrio today. The furniture company wants us to give them 30% upfront. They want, you know, $300,000 or $400,000.
Of the overall project, or just the section they're furnishing now?
They want 30% overall, so they want 30, 30 when it's being in production, and then we said 40 at the end. But we weren't really comfortable about giving them any money upfront. It's a reputable company, this and that, but I'm saying, this is a municipality. What company, how can we give them this kind of money upfront? So we elected to hold it till next Monday, till we get a clarity from Jeff DiNofrio.
Jeff's gonna work on it, because technically.
I just, I can't, we can't stroke a check to somebody and not know, listen, I've seen bigger companies fall, the bigger they are, the harder they fall.
It's odd, the, Rusty's never seen this done before. So basically, they're asking for almost $600,000 upfront before we see a product. $333,000, and then another $330, and then the final 40%, which is like, you gotta, you gotta, you know.
I mean, what's that?
Was that in the contract?
No, it wasn't. And, so Rusty said he doesn't normally see it, he has seen it once now, and I'm like, well, once is not really good enough for me. You know, you guys, and again, we told them, you know, another week's not gonna make a big difference until we get clarity. And if we get clarity sooner, we may hold a special meeting or Zoom with the group, but I don't think at this point, you know, can't wait till Monday.
We got a solid grip on that high school.
Thank you for all you're doing, it's a tremendous amount of work.
The, the police station's gonna be a lot easier.
Or a video, a walk in the park.
On the, on the school, are we still on time slot for the kids getting in the school in January?
Uh, yeah.
Second semester, or?
Yeah, they're on target. I mean, anything can happen, but right now, they are on target.
Still there.
As long as they.
Yeah, there's.
As long as they put in the specified specs and materials that we paid for, and they stay on target. Every week, we don't let them go by. So we meet on a Monday, and then we meet at the building on Friday for four hours. And then on Wednesdays, we all talk through the phone one at a time for three hours. It's a lot. They're moving quick.
They're moving fast, they, they are. I mean, from one walkthrough to another, they are, you know, they're, they're.
And they doubled up their crews, and they are cleaning up, because they know they're coming in every week.
Right, but that's why the biggest problem is, I said, I, you know, I, I paved one of my own terminals. I've had binder on it for two years. I got tractor trailers running 80,000 pounds over it. We can, we can put binder on this, and at the end of the year, at the end of the project, we'll be far better off, even if it costs us a few dollars, and we all talked about it, that we'll have a better coat, a better finished product at the end.
When we talk, when we mean a few dollars, since we're on.
The lining.
It's only 32,000. When I say only 32,000.
And it may not even be that.
And it may not even be that. Compared to the overall 70 million, to get a better product, it's, it's minimal.
We're gonna have settling, we're gonna have some issues, we're gonna have some cracks, we're gonna have this and that. We do have some, you know, like I said earlier, some, some subgrade issues. So, let it settle. Let, let's run on it with loaders and buses and fortworks and cranes and lulls and everything else for the next two years, and then we'll, we'll address it at the end.
Makes sense. I don't mean to cut you guys.
Yeah.
I'm very, I gotta get to my daughter's.
Thank you for being here.
So, you guys need anything from us, or you live with the PD?
Are we still on target to start the police station in September?
Yes, as long as you guys are signed off, sealed, delivered, and we're.
Not that, I'll.
So just so you know, phase, phase one, the 12,100,000 is already, they're already negotiating contracts with all the subs, that's already in motion. So it's line item six and seven for alternates.
Add alternates.
Add alternates, and then it's minor stuff.
Yeah, which is.
Anthony got it from here.
As soon as you approve that, this guy can start motoring along with that, because he wants, it's gonna be, you know, it'll be a year.
Okay.
Be done, 14 months.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, much appreciated. He'll check with Michael on.
I'll get that for you after the meeting.
They must love you guys down there, huh?
The agenda for.
They must love you guys down there on site.
They don't like us at all, quite frankly, at the site.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you some of the words they use on this.
Not even a word.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate all you and your committee do.
Okay.
Counselor Plicia's on the phone now.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Hi, Ron, how are you?
Counselor Plicia.
Hello.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item four, Community Events and Presentations. I'm just gonna take a moment, because one of the people here that sits on, on this board, who's done such a tremendous amount of work over the past year, I want to thank everyone, particularly the coordinators.
I wanna thank everyone, particularly the coordinators, Rose Angeloni, Lisa Panone, Steve Torino, and Mary Elise Giovanni for the outstanding outcome of the POCO Fest. I, I was, as we always make the joke, wowed. And I think a lot of the folks in this town were wowed. It was the best fireworks play that I've been at in a long time. The flow of traffic was great, kids were happy, food was great. It was, it was a real festival. I mean, it was a, a wonderful event and I know how much time you've put into it. I wanna thank everyone that volunteered, echoing most likely what you would say as well and thanking those folks. A lot of people put a lot of time into this event and it really, it puts North Branford on the map. Be it a small map in the state of Connecticut, but it's a heck of a festival. It's a time period that I think community building and bringing people together is needed more than ever. So, thank you very much for all you've done and the folks that are coordinators on this. It's not, it doesn't go unnoticed. So, wonderful job. Rose, if you wanna say something.
Yes, I would just like to say, so the weather did not disappoint. We always joke that it's the hottest weekend of the year. I think this was the hottest weather of any festival that we have had. It was, the humidity and the heat was extreme. We did run out of water. Franny and his crew, thank you so much, went to Big Y. Big Y was very nice. They literally took it off their floors by pallets. And will.
The pictures to prove this.
And they have now said that they will help sponsor next year and we can come to them. So that's great. You know, we did try earlier this year and, and I guess it's, it was just the whole timing. What happened, you know, the coordinating committee and, you know, my fellow coordinator Steve is in the back there. You know, we got put into this in April of this year, so we had four months to kind of pull this together and we never worked the back end of the house on this. We've all learned a lot from this festival. Our goal was just to get the festival running and off the ground and to see the smiles on the faces of everyone that attended. And I think we accomplished that. You know, kudos to Franny and his crew. They did a tremendous amount of work prior to the festival. The grounds were absolutely wonderful, but what he did to that. My station is generally outside of the festival grounds, but by taking that hill down, it was so nice to be able to actually see the festival. And so Franny and his crew, thank you so much. It's a lot of positive comments from people. The police department, great job filling all of our shifts. Fire EMS did an outstanding job. And we could not have done this without the volunteers. The volunteers are a very critical part of our core group. I see Bill Savastano is not here tonight, but I would like to personally thank Bill. He is probably our oldest volunteer. Bill was there every day of the festival. He was back in the potato and corn booth and thank you, Bill. It was great. We did get a number of new volunteers this year. Community people that have moved in the community within the last few years during COVID, when we didn't have POCO, they were excited to come and be a part of it. So that was great. I'd like to thank my fellow council members who volunteered and came. This is one of the first years that we had so many people from the council volunteering and I greatly appreciate that. So it was very nice and we are already, we haven't closed out and it's only been two weeks. We're still getting bills. But we are, are ready to start planning the next, next year's POCO Fest and because some of those contracts need to start happening now on there. But we had a great core group of people and we're looking forward to moving forward for next year on this also. So, thank you, everyone.
Yes, thank you. All right, and if you wanna volunteer, see Rose, she's ready to sign you up. All right. All right, well, any other community events and presentations? Anything else in that section? No? Okay. So we'll move on to citizen statements and petitions and correspondence. Any citizen statements? Seeing none, we'll move on to resignations and appointments. Item A, the resignation of Michael Downs and Town Council. We're acknowledging that resignation. And we thank him for his service on this town council as well as his past town councils he was part of as well. So we thank him for his time there. Item B, excited to have an appointment of a new town manager.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Michael Downs as the North Branford Town Manager.
Motion by Counselor Diamond, second by Counselor Abelson. Any discussion? Seeing none. Would you provide a roll call vote, please?
Mayor McPhelan.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampaño.
Yes.
Counselor Abelson.
Yes.
Counselor Yandeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Goddard.
Yes.
Counselor Mace.
No.
Counselor Flecha is on the phone.
Yes, yes. Counselor Flecha?
Counselor Flecha, how would you vote regarding the appointment of Michael Downs as Town Manager?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, we thank you and we're excited to have Michael join on as our next town manager. It's a, it's an interesting time to join North Branford, which I'm sure you're well aware of. Lots of projects and I think he's, he's finishing out his duties over the next 30 or so days at Town Stratford and going to be joining early in September. I believe it's September 13th is the date. And he's gonna come in full steam ahead and running. So we thank you for, for joining the team here in North Branford in a, in a different capacity and we look forward to great things ahead.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on from there. Item C, appointment of Gene Stabile, Parks, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Parks and Recs.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Gene Stabile to fill the vacancy from the passing of Bruce Farone and it will be just until his term expires.
12/31/24.
Okay.
12/31.
12/31/24.
Second.
All right, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampaño. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Let note that Counselor Flecha also accepted aye. All right, that passes. Thank you, Mr. Stabile, taking on another commission position. We appreciate that. And on to appointment, item D, appointment of Mr. Van Auger as the hearing officer for the ATV ordinance. We, we thank Van. He's got an impressive resume going through, currently a student, Yale Law School. I've got to know Van over the past couple of years, exemplary person. So really excited to see this take place. We'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Frederick Van Auger as the hearing officer for the ATV ordinance for North Branford. And again, as you said, if you look at his resume, he certainly has the qualifications to do that. And I know that the police commission also wanted to see Van as the hearing officer. And there are two cases pending, so we really need to vote on that.
Yeah, absolutely. Man, we're putting you right to work. All right, so that being said, any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't, I'm second. I apologize. Bruce second, right? My, my apologies. I should have stated that. A motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by, oh, I'm sorry, motion by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Abelson. My apologies. And any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, and again, Counselor Flecha, it's an aye. Absolutely. Yeah, Van, would you be willing to, being kind of new to the, the scene, would you be willing to come on camera and, and say hello? Please, yes.
Hello, everyone. Mr. Mayor and councilors, thank you for trusting me with, with this opportunity. You know, I look forward over the, the next couple of months, so long as I remain in Connecticut, to help with this important item. And I look forward to working with all of you and the chief of police in the weeks and months to come.
And we look forward to having you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very on the good work, my friend. Okay, okay, we're moving on to item seven, unfinished business discussion in action. Item A, discussion action of ARPA funds. This is tabled to September. I believe we're gonna table this to our September, second September meeting?
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't really matter, I guess. So we'll just keep it on here for now. All right. Item B, Fox Road Route 80 sewer extension, tabled to September 6th. Okay, we're good on that still? Okay, thank you, sir. Item C, discussion of, and possible action, draft agreement with Board of Ed to use of the Auger House. Where are we on this?
Still waiting to hear back from the council.
Okay, let's hope.
The school starts.
The school starts in a couple of weeks here. You know, I encourage this to take place. It's pretty simple.
The council's board of ed.
For the board of ed, thank you.
And I think, I think they may have had a meeting that was moved, so that might be the, the issue at hand. But we, we hope to get this off our unfinished business. It's a, it's a good thing to have and we certainly love what they're doing at the Auger House with that program. It's a, it's a wonderful thing that the board of ed's put together for our town. So hopefully we'll get that done. We'll table that for now. Okay, where am I here? Yes, thank you. Award, item D, award bid for RFP number two, 2022-93, agent and broker record, North Branford Board of Education Employee Benefit Program, tabled again to September 6th. Item E, award for RFQ slash P number five, 2021 to 2022, website design and development, tabled to September 20th. This is something that I'm excited to see Mr. Downs take on and hopefully get cleared up. Okay, and item F, review and approve administrator's job description, tabled to September, likely first or second, or probably second meeting. So we'll table that as well.
Just one note, just one note on that is, we had talked about at the last meeting, to make sure that any department where there's the director and then assistant, that the director reads the assistant and anyone under them, the job descriptions, to make sure everything is included in the job descriptions that you would like to see. So I know, like, there's an assistant town clerk, there's an assistant library director, so if, you know, you guys can make sure that you read those and have any comments.
Yes, there was an informational drop in your Dropbox that, there was a memo from our library director, Lauren Davis, who was very involved with the process. So that there was input from each department. So that did happen.
Okay.
The final step was the job descriptions then went to the town manager for review. That's the part that I think we may have, we may need further review.
Yeah, and the new town, we can wait until the new town manager comes on and reviews these.
He was to review the qualifications and what the town expected from potential candidates.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, so these, you know, if it goes into October, that's fine too. We just wanna make sure that it's done correctly.
You'll, yes, there's something further on down the agenda.
I saw the thing for assistant library director, but there was no explanation on it. It was just, it was just the job description and it didn't say anything. I wasn't sure what that was for.
I'll, I'll speak to that when we get to it on the agenda.
Okay. Okay. All right, we're good? Okay. Item G, D, DCD, financial assistance proposal for STW roof project. I believe we are also tabling this for now?
No, this has to be.
Oh, this is gonna be?
This has to be done.
Done tonight, good. Okay.
So it's in, it's in our, it's in our packet, in our desk.
There's a resolution prepared by the town attorney.
Right.
For your approval. Just, yeah, I mean, this process was started back in 2021. And the former town manager received, we received an urban act grant.
Oh, yes, okay.
Amount of 1.6 million. So we're coming to the end of the process and we need this resolution passed and the proposal signed, so we don't lose the 1.6 million for the STW roof.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion for the resolution regarding the Stanley T. Williams Community Center grant as presented.
Seven.
All right, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? All right, that passes. Thank you. Thank you for clearing that as well. I, my mind, off on that one. Read it correctly. Okay, on to.
Just put down your name.
Item eight, new business discussion in action. A, review and approval of assistant library director job description. New.
Okay. This is a new position that the council has included in the budget. It's scheduled to start January 1st, 2023. So we, it's a brand new position, so it's not an existing job description. It's one that we do need approval to start the hiring process. So if you were, were to approve this job description, the library director can then, we can then advertise for the job. We can recruit, we can interview and hopefully have a person in the position by January 1st because it's, it's.
Yeah, because it's budgeted for 2023.
Right, and we're trying to be ahead of the game this time and make sure we have the person in position. And Lauren is here, our library director, so.
Good evening, everyone. So exactly what Lisa said, the addition of the assistant library director was something that we spoke about in my budget workshop hearing. Earlier in the year, you funded it starting January 2023, but because it's a new position, it needs your approval to move forward in the process. The difference with this job description is it was not included in the batch of administrator job descriptions that HRCC updated because this wasn't in consideration when the project started. So I wrote this job description, but I based it off of mine and I edited it according to the role and level of this position. I also referenced some of the materials that HRCC provided the town at the culmination of the project. There was two documents in particular, standard content for a job description and their manual, how to write and update job descriptions. So I started with a standard template that all administrator job descriptions have. And then I edited it to the assistant director position based on their role and level. Director versus supervisor, leader versus professional. So there's that content that is different. But you'll notice that a lot of the language is similar, not just between the library job descriptions, but across all the administrators. That was one of their big selling points. They like the consistency of certain language to appear throughout.
I have a question. That second paragraph, do we consider the library a business or is that just a template paragraph?
That's a template paragraph.
To me, it doesn't make sense, you know, description for the library.
That was language you'll see when you go through all the other administrator job descriptions.
To me, it doesn't fit.
And it, I would like to say it can be changed, but the project has completed, so I'm not 100% sure who would go back.
Fit all of them?
There is standard paragraphs, even like essential functions, you'll see throughout all of them.
That was entered by the consultants, not the town.
It just doesn't seem like a library paragraph.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. That certainly can be, I'm sure they can be altered before you approve them.
It could be.
Business areas, right? So it's not.
I don't consider the library a business.
Yeah, but it's business areas, right? So maybe like it's the business of the library, not necessarily it being a business.
That's not the way it reads.
Yeah, you're probably right. Words, expertise, knowledge, special functions, or business areas.
Business strategies? Do you have business strategies?
Well, I mean, you have to remember that you're managing people, you're managing finances. It's an operational.
Operational functionality.
Functionality. It's just my personal opinion. This is not, you know, don't get hung up on that one word. Try to focus more on the.
I read the whole thing very quickly.
Try to focus more on the essential functions and the knowledge, skills, abilities part. That, I think, is what you really need to hone in on because, again, you wanna use this as a recruitment tool in making sure that we're fitting the right candidate in with what is required of the position. Because the whole point of updating these is so that it's reflective of what are we doing now in these positions. And that's important because things have changed rapidly. Things are revolving and it's important to make our job descriptions keep up with what the job is changing. I think a lot of our departments have gone through significant changes, you know, over the last two years especially from the pandemic. But, you know, besides that, just with keeping. But, you know, besides that, just with keeping up with technology and such.
Is the library back to its normal function, or say, pre-COVID?
Yep, we're open, our normal regular hours, we have programming going on. There's really no restrictions or limitations or modifications happening at all, so, which is good. It's nice to be back.
The updates look great, too. The painting and everything looks great. It's very fresh.
Any questions I can try to answer?
If you would like some of that changed, Lauren, would it harm if we tabled this until September 6th? Would that interrupt your process?
My biggest concern with getting it, you know, approved sooner rather than later so that we could start the process, knowing it takes a while for the advertising and the interviewing and getting paperwork. But if you want further time to look at it, you can certainly table it.
If you guys would like something adjusted, that's what I'm asking.
I think I'm by myself on this one.
I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying. I'm okay with it, just because.
It is a little bit foreign sounding when you're thinking of library. But if we were to look at Lisa's job description, I believe there's probably something similar.
It's standard language the consultant threw in most of them, so. But I can check to see if it's exactly worded that same way.
What do you want to do, Marie?
Now, it's, well.
I'll just stay.
I'm just looking at, because it's in our.
The former town manager did review this with Lauren, so it did have his blessing.
I wish I had more with me that I could quickly work through.
Well, it is not in the police chief's job description. So let me see this. It's not in the, I mean, in this, in that paragraph.
Not paragraph.
See, I think if you just put the first sentence of that second paragraph, or took out that second sentence, it would make sense. Yeah, so, so we can. Or you could say, position requires expertise and knowledge in the area of library.
Can we vote on this with the, well, the addendum, or that we're going to make a change to that language, or is that not?
Are you okay with that, Lauren?
Honestly, I am more concerned with what's listed in the essential functions and the jobs.
Why don't we change business to operational functionality?
No, that's good.
Okay, is that, we'll add that to the, to the motion, if that suffices to everyone.
Change to operational?
Functionality.
Functionality.
Good wordsmithing.
Mm-hmm.
Good for something once in a while.
And I'll go back through and I'll try to see which ones have that language, just to point out for you guys.
We can't do that. We can make the same change.
The public works superintendent has it, has it. Yeah, I'm just looking through what we have here. And it was there. But, so we need, we need a motion to approve this. We don't have that yet on the floor.
Ms. Diamond, will you make the motion?
To accept the job description with the change, the changes provided by the board.
Well, I, I just, I'll wait till discussion.
Yeah, we.
Accept the job description for.
Assistant library director, you do.
All right, we have a motion by Councilor Diamond. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure I see the impact, a negative impact with this job description, nor the value of changing it. So I don't even know really what the discussion is. I, I have to be, I'm being honest. It's clear, it's clear what, what the job description is.
I just don't consider the library a business.
I have a point of information. Tom speaking against the amendment?
I'm just, I'm just speaking against it. We're having this, we're spending time in this conversation, and I think, I think that job description is written pretty well.
The motion, the amendment's on the floor, and you're not agreeing with it. So are you speaking against the amendment if you want to convince others to go along? Okay, all right, so go ahead. I'm just trying to clarify, that's all.
Are you picking on me? No, I'm just making a point.
But ultimately, you'd be okay with the change?
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to make, make the change, but I think that we just wasted about 20 minutes.
Well, thanks a lot.
All right, so any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
You did a very good job convincing.
You convinced very well.
I know, but it's. It's okay, it is okay.
Okay, no, that was a good, good change, okay. Okay, on to, on to item B, discussion and possible action, planning and zoning, ZEO coverage. Lisa, you were going to bring something up on this, correct?
I am.
Thank you.
As you know, we're, we're without a town planner as of August 5th. And it is holding up applications in the land use department. So we really need to get some temporary help in. We haven't, and one of the options that I've discussed with our town engineer, and he's here if he wanted to elaborate a little bit more, is there are companies out there that we could hire in, in place of a person for temporary help, and they can cover everything. They can cover the town planning functions, they can cover the office, they can cover all of the meetings, prepare the agendas, and accept the applications. So what we're looking here for is your agreement to allow us to pursue this, because we need to do it sooner rather than later, and there's a process to hiring people. But there are towns that do it. One in particular that I spoke with is Durham. And actually, they do it full-time. They don't have a town planner, they don't have a ZEO. They hire a company that they pay on a monthly basis. We're looking for some temporary help. Whether or not it turns into permanent, we are currently advertising for a town planner. And we did get, I did receive a name, just so you know, and you're aware, of somebody who may be interested in the ZEO position, whether it be temporary or permanent, I'm not sure. It is a town resident. I'm going to try and touch base with him tomorrow, because the ZEO needs to sign off on simple things, a building permit, if somebody wants to get a shed, a little building permit, needs to be signed off by a ZEO, which we do not have. There is also an opportunity to appoint another member in land use, which I'm not sure if you're aware of, Victor. And we spoke of it's possible to appoint the building official or the assistant building official as ZEO. And that was done prior. Bob LaBoula did that at one point, a former building official. So we do have options, but we need to move sooner rather than later. So I'm looking, I'm not looking for a motion, I'm looking for your blessing to pursue this and then come back if we have concrete information or an appointment to be made.
I think this needs to be taken care of. This is the end of summer, people are doing projects. We don't want to hold folks up from projects that they're trying to do. Put a deck on, put a, you know, a shed, as you said. This little administrative technicality, we need to take care of that. So my suggestion would be that I would look, start doing your research if there's a service that can be provided, and in the interim, if we can have a conversation with our assistant building official or building official. See if we can have them take on that responsibility, and we can do a quick, I guess we'd have to do a quick special meeting?
No.
Yeah.
Oh, so we zoning here?
The zoning.
Okay, so zoning, you're right.
Playing and zoning could do that and have a meeting this Thursday.
So I would urge that the zoning commission on Thursday, have that conversation prior, but then have someone appointed for that, so that we're not leaving this open-ended for folks that want to finish up projects in the summer.
And if we want to pursue the, on the town planner side, one of these companies.
I would like more information.
We would, I have, I have some, and I can give you, it should be in your packets, but we have a draft proposal that Victor worked on. We kind of used Durham as a boilerplate.
Okay.
So that's in your package.
Yeah, let's definitely look at that and have that ready for.
And if you want to pursue that, I can have the town attorney review that to be sure we have everything that should be enclosed in the scope of work. Should we go that route temporarily?
Yeah, do you want to come up and talk? Please, yes.
Lisa nailed everything. Great so far. The sheds and the decks of the world, if I put it that way, it's good. If we can keep those moving and keep the trades going, keep the applicants, you know, happy and let their process move forward, it's the bigger projects that are going to start coming in.
Police department.
And I will say that the police department is one that had a zoning application dropped today. I don't want that to be held up, along with other, you know, bigger projects as they roll in. And I think in fairness to a assistant building official, building official, or even myself, if I was to act as the temporary or interim as ZEO, we only have till, I think, January 1st of, of 2023 before that person will need to be certified zoning enforcement official by state statute. Our town attorney kind of reviewed that with me earlier this afternoon. And I think just moving forward to have somebody, you know, in that seat as a temporary zoning planner and zoning official, where even if we have a couple days a week of someone in that seat providing office hours, and that's where I think that temporary company, if we're, you know, allowed to move forward with, with reviewing the agreement that was prepared, and then potentially moving forward with, you know, putting that out and interviewing some companies with the new town manager coming in. And, you know, maybe using that process moving forward while we're also considering interviewing for a town planner. So, you know, it's kind of like we've, over the past couple of years, have interviewed for town planners, and the job, the applicants that have come in haven't been many. So we haven't had many people to choose from, and it seems like instead of just hiring who's ever available, stick with the temporary company until we feel like we really found our candidate for, for that position. Just a, a little bit of brainstorming on the subject, I guess.
What do you need for us to do that?
I think, I think we're there if we can, if we can do a interim, ZEO.
Did the town attorney review this proposal yet?
Not, not yet.
We wanted your blessing to see if you were in favor of it before I came up.
So you have our blessing, right, and look ahead, shake your head, to start looking into that in the interim. Again, urge, again, I say this with all due respect, but urge the, the planning and zoning to have someone appointed Thursday, either a building official or unfortunately, if you want to.
No, not, not unfortunately.
I mean, I know you have a lot on your plate, but whoever it could do that, because it is important that we have these smaller projects, that the people are doing it right in this town, coming to us, as well as larger projects that we need to, we have timing that has to go along with this, so.
I think, and just to make sure you realize that, it'll still be a joint process between the three of us in that office, the assistant and the building official and myself, where, you know, we're going to have those conversations if there's a question. I mean, you know, a shed is not the complicated one.
Yeah.
When we run across the more complicated situations, we'll all, you know, discuss it if we need to, and we'll have hopefully the town attorney at our disposal to ask those questions. But, you know, not running every one of those ones by, by him or his company.
Okay. I think that makes sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other items on that? Right, first on that? Okay. All right, on to C, assessment, deferral, excuse me, assessment, deferral program, 1355 Middleton Avenue, building one.
Dave, do you want to just, Mr. Ambrose?
Mr. Ambrose, yes.
Yes, the project checks all the requirement boxes. I met with the developer, he's a very impressive young man. He was well-prepared and he had enough documentation to allow me to put a value on the property.
That's great.
It's pretty standard and it's a really good project.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so you need a motion by us, right, to accept this?
Yes.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept the assessment deferral program for 1355 Middleton Avenue, building number one.
Okay, motion by Councilor Angeloni, what's that? Okay, seconded by Councilor Abelson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Ron, you still there?
No, he left.
Okay, Ron's off. I just wanted to make sure, I didn't want to be rude and leave him off. Okay, that passes, thank you very much.
Sure. If I may, I think the assessor should be mandated to provide you with the annual report of the program, the progress and the impact.
Yes.
I think that should be an annual report.
When would you suggest that would be the timeframe to do that?
February, right after we sign the grant.
February, okay. I'll make note to that to the town, new town manager, that we have that in the agenda for February. That makes a lot of sense, having more information.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
And thank you for taking this program, the, you know, this program on this assessment deferral, because I know, you know, we had to revamp a little bit here. So thank you, Dave, for.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much. Okay, on to item D, sewer deferral payments, 47 Blue Tail Drive. I believe.
That's you, Mr. Victor.
Well, you can both of them.
I'll take it.
The assessor is working hand-in-hand with our land use department on these deferral assessments.
We let you go too quick.
The individual has to write a letter requesting the deferral on an annual basis. And the only requirement that I see is that the homeowner or the person requesting the deferral has to meet the income requirements for the state homeowners program, and this person does.
Okay.
Usually, we have two people, but this year we only have one. I don't know what happened to the other woman, but hopefully she's.
Dave, just a quick question, sorry, but.
No, please.
Is this something that's usually voted on or decided on by the WPCA, or does it matter?
It goes before the town council.
It does?
Yes.
All right, because I think it was on WPCA.
On your agenda?
Agenda the last year. I'm just thinking of this now, so, does it matter?
Sure.
They are WPCA.
Okay.
Sorry?
They function in both roles.
They are, but I didn't.
So it doesn't, it doesn't matter?
I know what he's saying, yeah.
All right. Sorry.
It's okay?
Good question.
Good question.
Do we need a motion?
Is it okay, Brian, or should we wait till the WPCA meeting?
I may have to look at the program, but I think since you act in both capacities, you'd be okay, please.
You can make note in the motion that this is in regards to the WPCA?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll just, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the sewer assessment deferral for October 1st, 2022, and January 1st, 2023, as submitted.
Motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Xanpano. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you, and thank you again, sir.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, Anthony, you're on the hot seat. Item E, amended bonding resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you may recall at the last meeting, the construction numbers came in about 15 and a half million. I was instructed to go back and confirm the interest issuance costs and the 250,000 that was budgeted to realign the Public Works driveway. And when adding those together, it comes up to about 16,115. Decision was made to round it to 16,2 for the revised resolution that you have in front of you.
So if we already approved 12 million, 250.
Right.
Then this is another 8 million, so now we're, we'd be up to 20 million.
Negative. If you look in section one, the sum of 16,2 is appropriated. So if you look on the paragraph before there, it went from one number to 12, 250 to 16,2. So 16,2 is where you're going to be at. That's your max resolution and bonding amount, if that's what you want to go to. That's the budget for the program, the project.
So we're amending.
You're amending the 8.5.
Resolution of 8.5.
8.5, that went to 12.25, now it's 16,2.
Okay, got it. Okay.
All right, thank you for clearing it up.
So, so I'd like to make a motion to amend the bonding resolution.
You want to adopt the resolution as attached in its entirety?
Oh, okay. All right.
Thank you, Anthony.
Yes. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution as attached in, in its entirety, so it'd be a total of 16.2 million.
Correct. Okay, motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded, what's that, you, Chris? Councilor Abelson? Sorry, my ear's not working well over here. By Councilor Abelson, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, thank you. All right, and then item F, appropriation transfers.
Some appropriation transfers as we look to close out the 21, 22 year. There's some larger ones that I've been asked by finance to get some more detail to, but I suggest you pass them, and then I could provide that to the entire council, primarily the technology expenses as to what was. primarily the technology expenses as to what was involved in those that drove them to a high.
So moved as presented. This is for the appropriation transfers for fiscal year 21-22.
Second.
All right. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Again, you'll come back with a.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, thank you. And item G, contingency transfers.
There's two contingency transfers for you to act on tonight. The first one, 21-22, lists about six items, again, one of them being the technology costs and the debt service refunding cost, the cost of issuance. We didn't plan on refunding last year, but we did, so those costs were not budgeted. Fire hydrants were up. There was some new hydrants added on Totoka Road as part of the new houses they put down there towards Mill Road. And those are the items to, and the auditor on the mayor and council, the contractual, you recall at the audit time, there was some increased cost because they had to do a federal single audit act. That was not contemplated early on in the project.
Make a motion to approve the fiscal 2021-22 contingency appropriations totaling $95,075.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, thank you.
The next one, following up some vandalism that occurred on the Auger Farm property. There was a desire to put some security cameras and this is the bill corresponding to that installation of security cameras on the Auger Farm property.
I make a motion to approve the contingency appropriation for fiscal year 22-23 for $7,985.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. And item H, approval of tax refunds?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, and we're gonna move over to item 8I, award bid number 12 NBHS for Phase 3 technology package to Omni Data LLC in the amount of $202,191.68.
So moved. Second.
All right, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. And yes, that's the addendum that we got. It was item 13I, but it should be 8I. We had some changes. You'll see that within.
That was in your folder, Michelle.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Passes, thank you. All right, on to item 8J, award of NBHS digital signage package contract to Environmental Services Company in the amount of $33,202.83, DAS contract number 19PSX0015.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. And item 8K, award of NBHS wireless access point contract to E Plus Technology Incorporated in the amount of $138,131.76, DAS contract number 18PSX0202.
So moved. Second.
Counselor Angeloni's motion, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. And item L, I knew I wasn't gonna be able to read my own writing. Okay. Discussion and action on compensation for acting town manager.
I would like to make a motion to have Lisa Valenti, the acting town manager, receive the same hourly rate as the former town manager from August 6th until the new, until the date of the new hire, the new town manager starting. So it would be through September 12th.
Second.
All right, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by, or Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
Please.
I was kind of ambivalent about this. Nothing personal against the person getting the position and everything else. I considered an acting manager over the past nine years when the manager was out, that they get promoted to that type of pay and the argument can be made, well, no, the town manager was available, we can call him up. That's not what an acting manager does, in my opinion. An acting manager doesn't have to call somebody through the acting manager. Same thing as a chairperson of a committee. If the chairperson isn't out and the vice chair sits in, well, if something comes up, the vice chair then say, let me call the chairperson. But I know we're running unusual times and I know Lisa's very good, so I'm gonna support the motion that I think you deserve to get it because we're in a trough right now and we need somebody like you to be here to have a hands-on, so I support the motion, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your thoughts. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right. Lisa, thank you for what you're doing. I know it's a lot on your plate, so we truly appreciate the efforts you're making. You're doing a great job.
Thank you. I'm just trying to help out the town and with the rest of the administrators. We have a great group.
We do. We're very lucky.
So it's with their help as well.
I thank them as well. I know you guys have a lot on your plate, so thank you very much. Okay, I think we were through that portion. I'm on to item 9, citizen statements and petitions. Are there any citizen statements and petitions? Seeing none, I'm gonna move on to item 10, executive session for CSG 1-200C 6A personnel. We will include the acting town manager, town attorney, Brian Leclerc, the council. Is there anyone else that needs to be involved? I'm not remembering. I think that's it. I'll request a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. All in favor? Or any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, we are in executive session.